What time did you finally fall asleep on Wednesday morning? Anything like that takes you about an hour and a half, hour and hour and a half just to decompress. About a day for your body to recuperate. The Dead, Jumana and Jackie on.
Okay. For all Zoom.
Marla and at this time.
Sure.
The Dead, can you hear us? Trace will be coming in.
Doesn't raise, what's our forum?
I think we're good.
Yeah, I've got it. Yeah, I know. Eleven days.
Like the monitor put her video on.
Yeah, and then we're ready to go, time wise we are. Yeah, there she is.
Sorry. I was trying to eat. The last bit of my dinner.
Are we good? Okay. Meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Special Improvement District Board of Trustees meeting is now called to order. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least forty eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to provisions of NJS A ten colon four dash six. It's act the Open Public Meetings Act by posting such notice in Town Hall and the township's website by notification to newspapers on December twenty third, twenty twenty, and by providing notice to the township clerk. Please stand while we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jumana will be acting as our temporary secretary today. Jumana, can you call the roll call, please?
Sure. Jumana Culligan here. Tracy Katz Levine is coming later. Hold on. Trying to pull up the names, okay, Andrew Morgan. Nadej Nickel.
Yeah.
Michael Parlebeccio. Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Steven Weiner.
He's absent today.
Okay. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Alex McDonald. I think that's it.
One, two. Two, that's special. Okay. If our mission statement, did you want me to read the mission statement? All right, I'm there. Mission statement of this organization, the purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a new district management corporation, the MC, whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. Approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty one meeting have been circulated. If nobody has any additions, corrections, deletions, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor to approve those minutes of the January fourteenth meeting.
Hi.
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 Right, moving on to public comments. I'm sorry.
Maybe just want to get a different second from.
Oh, because she's not.
Oh, okay, sorry, let's go back, can I have a new mover for the approval of these minutes of January fourteenth?
Motion.
Okay, Jumana Culligan with his mover, can I have a second?
Second.
Nadej Nichols, the second. All in favor of approval of these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they're approved. Next portion is public comments. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. We also have an opportunity to, the public has an opportunity to give an email and they can send a copy to the Milburn Short Hill Sid at MSHSID at milbert township.org to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meetings may do so in person and may also do so by phone or computer via Zoom, and there are people up there. Okay, and people who are dialing in by Zoom or telephone will also be given three minutes to speak. Can we start, let's start with who's online? Okay.
Yes, hi there, Jean Pasternak, three, four, two, Hobart Avenue. I have to say, it feels really weird to be commenting publicly before, you know, we've had a chance to really hear much, but I understand that you have taken steps to improve the virtual meeting procedures based on the recommendations from the state, and I do appreciate that, I think we all do. The more public comment, the better, and the more ability to interact and exchange is absolutely desired. I am a resident, I am not a business owner, so I'm looking at what your activities are so far and in context of what the township committee is doing. In that context, I'm most interested in the transparency and accountability of any governmental organization that affects me like this one will and as our local government does. So what I've heard that I want to still raise with you and try and get to the bottom of is. So two hundred thousand dollars plus of Milburn residents taxpayer dollars have been allocated to the Sid. And my concern is this, it's a lot of money during the time of a pandemic when taxpayers are struggling, businesses are struggling, the township is going to struggle based on returns on tax, you know, taxpaying businesses and citizens, so you know, this is almost like a luxury, and it's not really clear to me that it's been done properly in terms of the process to set up the Sid, first of all, there was no feasibility study done prior to the passing of the ordinance for the Sid, and that really has not ever been addressed or answered by either this board of trustees or the township committee members. Secondly, the board was not elected, it was appointed, and in the New Jersey statutes governing this, those two things, the feasibility and the election of a board are stated as being necessary to form a Sid. And then, thirdly, I'm a bit troubled because I don't think the taxpayers have been adequately communicated to about the amount of money that's been directed from the budget of the township committee into this SID without proper notification, without really giving taxpayers a chance, resident taxpayers a chance to give you feedback, you being the township committee as well as the Sid organization about whether that's okay with them. So those are, those are my initial comments, and secondly, the the elephant in the room that's still out there and for me is where's the role of the municipal attorney in sanctioning this organization? There's outstanding, you know, litigation regarding a conflict of interest and one of the township committee members votes in order to have the ordinance passed, that hasn't been settled. There's, you know, the real validity question about whether this was okay, and where's the written opinion from the township municipal attorney saying that the actions to form a Sid were done properly, I haven't been able to get that or see that, and that concerns me a lot. The other, I guess the other thing that I'm very concerned about is that the township municipal attorney, you know, there's an outstanding matter that's not being addressed, which is that he was paid over two million dollars since two thousand thirteen till today over the retention cap in his, his, you know, agree, his, his.
Thirty seconds.
However you want to call it, sorry, but he basically is sort of, that's, all roads lead back to the legality of this, of this, of this group being formed. The other thing I wanted to point out is I was part of the visions mini session that took place this week in one of them, and I have to say the same thing I said to the township committee members, that many of the people I spoke to that were in the group I was in afterward felt that it was there was not enough time to address the broad subject matters that were raised. For example, people were talking about housing, but there was like.
Can I just ask you to wrap up in the next couple of seconds, please?
Sure, yeah, I just, I want to say that the mini sessions feel unimportant, not really being taken seriously, and not leveraging the incredible experience, knowledge, and so forth of this community, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one else on Zoom if you want to go to.
No one else, okay, did we receive anything in writing, any emails or anything?
At my knowledge.
Okay, if anybody in the room would like to come and speak, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Feld from eleven Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I did send an email this afternoon, it went to Ryan. BA, the two gentlemen in front here, Alex, the two gentlemen in front of me. I would like to know whether, I asked it to be distributed to all members, I don't know if it has, I just heard it was not received by the BA, but I have no confirmation that was not received. These are my questions and they guide what we do. I feel like with all the snow outside, something that started as a small snowball has become a major avalanche. And I got involved on a different issue, but the more we discovered, it was just previously mentioned, there are serious issues as to the validity of the Sid. You said, why should we listen to Mr. Feld? Well, you should maybe contact Jeff Bueller and ask Jeff Bueller what he knows about me, because in July two thousand eight, he told Orange, without a feasibility study, you will not have a bid or a Sid, you need buy-in, and that's what I've been saying from day one. There's a list of questions, first of all, I want to compliment the chair for the resolution today about the virtual participation rules. You are, you've heard my comments and you have incorporated, if you look at the agenda, I compliment you by saying specifically, we have agenda action items. You do listen to some of the things that we are saying procedurally. I still believe that there should be two opportunities to speak right now on action items and later at the meeting reflecting on what is said and other issues. Today, if you read the store ledger, it's not often I can stand in a public meeting and say that Leonardo Webster, myself and the chair as the council to the commission, S S County Commissioners all agree on one point that there is two opportunities to speak in the public meetings, that's a public note from Roseland. I list questions, you know, as to the virtual participation, I think I appreciate having a deadline, like five o'clock or seven o'clock the day before, but I think the deadline should be based on us having at least forty eight hours notice of what's being done, because today's meeting, the agenda was only posted nine o'clock yesterday morning, and really, we did not have opportunity, because I didn't get my email out to probably around two thirty or three o'clock this afternoon, that there should be a recognition that we have approximately forty eight hours. In addition, I would recommend, this is a comment I make, whether you're in a Sid or in a local governing body, that we do submit written questions in the head, that they're posted on some public website, use technology, so other people can see what we're talking about, because that's what I'm really doing, is incorporating the questions, because as an attorney, I'm talking to the chair as an attorney, there are really serious issues as to the legality of this organization, and I think it's time to take a timeout, because yesterday, the local finance board had an issue about ethics complaints, and there was, they didn't, I raised my hand, they didn't let me speak, but it seems to be that they're going to be sending something to the New Jersey Register for comments. There's real issues, but that, as we discussed before, the ethics issue is a side issue, there's really serious issues about whether it's an elected appointed board, whether feasibility studies, there's really issues as to the legality, and I was just saying, as I said, we talked about the snowball. What we've discovered, in my opinion, from our municipal attorneys, I would take hesitance and not give a lot of weight, because I've not have seen one written opinion, and as to Oprah, I made an request for re-employment contracts, have not received them.
Thank you, Mr. Feld.
Hi, Vicky Powell, Shala, three fifty eight Milburn Avenue. Ryan, we're looking forward to seeing what you can do, we're very excited that you're on board, let's get out there and get going. Um, now that Ryan's here, I hope we can have some more attention with Marla to social media and marketing, because I'm noticing that our social media is lacking, we just had a Lunar New Year post, and there were two original content posts and very little, you know, buy-in on that, I think we're lacking in that, I know Marla was spread thin in the beginning, so I hope now that we can delegate where she should be used, because, you know, I look at the hashtag that you guys want to use, you got to get it out there, I look at hashtag explore Milburn Short Hills, I'm basically the only one that's using it, I mean, I can see it, you can see all posts that I post always has the explore Milburn Short Hills, you got to get it out there, you got to get to the people to use that, if you're going to use that hashtag, you got to get everyone to use it, it can't just be one or two stores, where it's sorely lacking, it needs to be, you need to get more communication out there. I mean, I, more newsletters to the merchants, why don't we say, oh, we have a meeting, why don't you come and see what we're all about, that needs to be addressed. Um, I have a lot, um, hashtag more communications, we need more people to be, to do a buy-in. I also noticed the banners, I don't know if in your budget for the improvements, the banners that we had made a couple of years ago, the purple and the green ones, they need to be replaced, they're fading badly. I mean, you should just throw them away, they look horrible. I also want to know on the budget, what's tech support for two thousand dollars? If you have your website already have tech support, what's tech support, are you buying computers? I'm a little curious about that, because I understand that you took money out of, away from some of the events and put it into IT tech support, so I was a little concerned about that, and you know, it's Valentine's Day, and there was, again, back to social media and posting and all that stuff, there was nothing posted, I mean, I'm looking at other towns, I'm looking at Pelham, New York did a Valentine's Day Summit, did a nine-page, you know, printout on what's going on. We got to get, we got to get the message out there, we're not, we're lacking, we're talking about the two hundred and fifty dollar gift certificate, which I think is great, but we're not focusing our attention to other things, we're just focusing on one thing, and it's, it's not good. Valentine's Day, Sunday, there's been barely anything put out there. You know, and I mean, I don't know why we can't do, I have, I'll give it to Ryan, somebody in Chicago, a bid in Sid in Chicago did a a raffle with tickets, ten dollars each, rate ten thousand dollars for their, their, their business isn't down, we got to get going. Now that we have Ryan on board, let's, let's, let's get going, that's, you know, I, that's it.
Thank you.
Nancy Stone, Nancy and David Fine Jewels, two, six, six Essex Street. So I'm here to address the budget, and I, first I want to compliment you, Michael, because I liked, I loved the transition that you were graciously giving Gene as to can you wrap it up in a nice way, because they can't see the buzzer or the numbers, so that was very commendable of you and how you did that, and I appreciate that. So I'm here to talk about the budget, because I was the previous treasurer of the DMDA, and I have, you know, quite a bit of information from the previous DMDA that I wanted to share this evening. So one of them was, how did you get to the two hundred and four thousand dollar explore budget when the, if you were illegally going to give the two hundred, the twenty eighteen DMDA budget, you would have seen the Sid assessment was a hundred ninety four thousand, Alex, we got two payments on three twenty eight eighteen for a hundred and three thousand, and on nine twelve, which I, Jackie was the voting factor to give it to us after I offered to become treasurer, and she basically said, if you're going to be, because I gave her my word, if this is not going to work, I'm shutting it down. And she gave the nine, she gave the final vote for the ninety one thousand. Diane, I believe, was against it, and everybody else, she was the tiebreaker, Jackie. So we got a hundred and three thousand on three twenty eight and ninety one thousand on nine twelve. We did get a nine thousand dollar grant from the TC to clean the streets, but we spent ninety nine thousand nine hundred dollars to do that with time to clean. So I really would like an explanation for that. I also object to the carryover monies as a resident, because we gave the sixteen thousand as a deposit, basically, to get started, and that should have come out of the hundred ninety four thousand dollars, not the two hundred and four, which I don't know how you got that number, the monies that were, the Sid assessment was a hundred ninety four thousand, and you should know that, because you're in charge of this, is the TC liaison, so we should be starting from a one ninety four number. So I object to that eleven thousand carryover. I see you took five hundred from the IT and added it to fifteen hundred in dues and membership and a thousand dollars in office supplies, which, Richard, you were touting, oh, we're going to use all the rubber bands and the paper clips from the town, we're not going to be using office supplies, you know, you were going to be tapping into the TC paper clips, so I'd like to see that thousand dollars and fifteen hundred, I don't know what dues, what are we paying dues, we used to pay dues for the chamber, but that's, I'd like to know exactly what you're paying for, nice three card Monte on lumping everything together on the holiday seasonal event, so you can move things around. That was tried, and I would like to know whose bright idea was that, because that was tried at the last DMDA, and David Sorkin, who was the president, and I objected very strongly to that, we had everything categorized by the snowflake parade, the farmer's market, and I want to see a breakdown on how you're giving the money in advance. Also, big problem with the visual, improvements, events bring people to town, and I see nothing for donations. We solicited donations, it happens to be, Vicky was very good about soliciting donations, and there was no category, which really brought the budget up to the over two hundred thousand. So you really need to take a look at the starting point of one ninety four and work down from there.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Anybody else wish to speak this time?
We, we do have two more on.
Online? Okay.
I'm going to bring on Perry Urso.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time, Perry Urso. I have a couple of questions and comments. This, first, Mr. Polavecchio, in the last meeting, you corrected me that this is not Congress and we cannot yield our, our time. So my question is, the county allows, does the county allow the public to speak more than once? Or at least two times?
Don't, don't use your, all your three minutes waiting for me. I could answer with, yeah.
So also, are, also are you or is your law firm or law firm, your law firm affiliated with the firm retained by the township as a special counsel regarding the affordable housing matters? I've also observed in the meetings that you've replied, as you just did again to me, that either of our concerns would be discussed or answered later in the meeting. And that's really not the case. So what's the responsibility of the board before you're taking action? I mean, especially with not having an attorney representing this organization. It's very concerning. Under what state statute or regulations are you allowing an elective official who's is a board of trustees the right to vote? Also, during Thursday's meeting, Mr. Feld presented himself at the township committee meeting. And he was stating to the township that he has not yet received, and it's to now brought to our attention that we are, in fact, should have received the executive director's contract immediately, and he has not done so. However, I was in that meeting and I did observe, observe the executive director shaking his head regarding that matter. And he was actually shaking his head no. So if Mr. Gleason would take a moment, if he could, to explain why he was shaking his head? And if, in fact, if we're not allowed to have that, I would like to know. Also, in the budget line items, you have mentioned lighting. Also, during a TC reorganization meeting, there was a conversation between committee woman Eglo and our business administrator, the timestamping was 31.40, semi-colon, 48. And that conversation was about the lighting of $80,000. So I see you have allotted now another $15,000 for lighting. And the business administrator made it very clear that that $80,000 budget was included for Upper Milburn Avenue and Chatham Road. And in verbatim, he's repeated that several times because I made sure that I listened to it over and over again. Also, the last thing, I have an outstanding Oprah request from January 29th and another one on February 3rd. When am I going to expect to get this answered? I did get a response back from Mr. Gleason. I thank you for your time. But in that part of my request was, I would like to see the contract, not only from you, from the executive director, but our marketing director. I would like to know how many people actually inquire.
I ask you to just, please.
So as a stakeholder, you're going to cut us off. Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio.
I'm not cutting anybody off.
I, I'm hope, well, you know, I'm hoping at the end of the meeting that you will answer our questions or at some point, at some point. Thank you.
One, one more on, on Zoom. Allison?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, terrific. Good evening. My name is Allison Canfield. I'm the chair of the HPC. I want to thank you, Mr. Chair and the Board of Trustees for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to speak on behalf of, I've been following and very interested in the work that you're doing. I support the mission. But I would also like you to consider a collaboration with the HPC. Not sure if you know, but the HPC has access to the National Trust for Historic Preservation of 1977 designed the Main Street Approach, which is also called the Main Street Four Points Approach. It also provides revitalization tools and information to communities. And in multiple studies, while the Cid program alone are very powerful entities in terms of funding downtown development, when coupled with HPC Main Street program, the benefits have a greater impact. And in those studies, it's best when Cids and Main Street have collaborated. There are over 200 community, or 2,000 communities. And a lot of them here in New Jersey that we know of, very prominent communities that I think we would like to be like, or we are at like. And I would love to present this to your board, you know, at a later date, but sooner than later. I think we'd be a great fit for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everybody who would like to speak.
All right. If I, just a quick personal privilege, as a general statement, I don't think it helps. Well, I'm not in a position to answer questions that are really directed to the township attorney or the township committee. I think they will have to answer those questions. Questions about other public bodies, also not really, especially not from this town, not really relevant to the business we do. If you had any other questions personally about me, feel, please email me. We can handle it that way. All right, next item, what are we up to? Mr. Gleason, Ryan Gleason, our executive director. Like to introduce him. He's sitting here. He's been talked about. There's no pressure at all on him, anybody. Just going to slide right in without any sweat. Ryan, why don't you introduce yourself to everybody officially?
We can't hear you, Ryan.
Yeah, go to your mic. Then you gotta hit the other one.
The one?
Yep.
How about now? Yes?
Just lean into it a little.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you very much, Michael. It's a pleasure to be here finally in an official capacity. Very much looking forward to working with all of the trustees to accomplish our mission of helping Milburn Short Hills businesses and property owners really take it to the next level. I, I know there's a history. I know there is a lot of backstory. And in my first two weeks, I've very much been learning and listening. And that's really been my focus in my first few days is, is speaking with all of the board members, members of the township committee, employees of the township, merchants. And that's going to continue in the, in the weeks and months ahead. I will say, I believe that this is an opportunity for a fresh start. We have a great board here with us and we have a great opportunity to do, do great work. I will say, I am very much familiar. Allison from HPC mentioned the Main Street Approach and the Four Point Plan. I would very much like to discuss that with the board members at future meetings and how we can better align with the Main Street model. It really allows for opportunities for grants and, and things that we can really bring more resources to bear in Milburn Short Hills, not just through the assessment, but through other funds. And yeah, I'm very much looking forward to getting to work and really hunkering down, you know, improving the marketing and promotions and really getting the buzz and excitement out about what's happening, you know, not just downtown, but in all five of the business districts that we represent. I hope, I have, you know, I've mentioned at the township committee meeting and at other meetings, I have over 10 years' experience working with small businesses, you know, with my work with the Staten Island Chamber and the Downtown Denville Business Improvement District. Really learned a lot, a lot of lessons in both of those places and looking forward to bringing my experience to this board.
Thank you, Ryan. And Ryan is located in this building in Town Hall. I expect if it ever stops snowing, he will be getting around and introducing himself to everybody. If I didn't, thank you all for your public comments. I, I really, I think we all appreciate it. It's, it is helpful. Administrative updates, we have from Alex or Ryan. First thing on is new emails and contact process, very important.
Yeah, I, I can take this, Michael. Yes, we have a new email structure. All the board members now have their own email addresses. And it is their first name at exploremilburnshorthills.org. So if you'd like to get in touch with any of our board members on any specific issues related to a subcommittee or, you know, anything of that nature, feel free to, to reach out to them. Obviously, you can reach out to me. My email address is ryan@exploremilburnshorthills.org. And we're going to be really switching over to those going forward. You know, we're, we're going to really try to stay in that one email system and use that as our primary means of communication moving forward, as well as with our website, which we're hoping to launch in the next few weeks and possibly a few months. So look forward to that.
Thank you. Alex, do you have any administrative updates?
No, I just can update on the 501(c)(3) application, which is that we still have not yet heard from the IRS, but that application is in. And so, again, in speaking to the auditors, it is expected to take three months at a minimum. So we're about two and a half months in, and so we should hope to hear soon.
Did you have a question? Oh, no, it was your glasses.
Yeah. Well, you're, yeah, I actually, I actually did want to just say, if anybody wanted to reach me, I'm actually, I have a different, I actually have a different official email, which is rwasserman@milburntwp.org, just, you know.
And a perfect segue.
Sorry, Chair, Michael. I just want to also maybe provide a bit of update in terms of there, there is a web, an email address, mshcid@milburntwp.org that will be phased out. And i, i, if it is necessary to re-notice meetings as, as a result of that, we will do so. But, but for the time being, it will, it will stay there, but we will.
Right. And we'll update our, our agenda and other things to make sure that notice is done properly. All right. Mr. Wasserman, updates from the Township Committee meeting.
Um, well, I just want to welcome Ryan. Most of all, you know, I will, you know, I don't want to embarrass you, but I will tell you that your, your recommendations from your past work were outstanding. And I just want to say how happy we are that you're here, you're on the ground. And you could see from many of our speakers, we have a lot of high expectations for you to help our businesses. It's a, it's a, obviously a challenging time for a lot of people. And, and so, but I do want to publicly welcome you as, yes, as part of the Cid and, and part of the community.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, update to the committee meeting?
I, you know what? I would say that I don't have anything specific that I wanted to, you know, add. I would say that, that if, if you looked at the video of the meeting, I, I think there's a lot of support from my colleagues. You know, I don't want to speak for anybody in, you know, in particular, but there's a lot of support for the work that we're doing. And, and I also wanted to, you know, mention when Allison called in, you know, that I had a conversation with her earlier. And I think there are a lot of great historic, you know, sites and homes that, that we could collaborate with. You know, I think that people, you know, we have a very rich history. And, and I think that, that there could be some, you know, there, there could be some positive synergy, you know, bringing people to town and maybe even some of our signage, you know, when we, when we let people know where, you know, where, where our restaurants and stores and merchants are. There might be interesting to highlight some of, you know, some of our historic places while we're doing that. Anyway, but just.
That's a good idea. Okay, moving on to our subcommittee updates. The first one is our marketing subcommittee. And Jumana, are you taking that?
I'm taking that. Hi, everybody. I just also wanted to quickly welcome Ryan to, to Explore Milburn Short Hills and our community. We look forward to working with you. So our marketing subcommittee had a, an excellent meeting on February 10th. We have a pretty robust subcommittee with a lot of, I guess, residents of Milburn Short Hills who are really engaged. And I think we had a pretty productive meeting. Ryan sat in on that meeting and so did Marla. We, our website development, I believe the contract with New Frontier has been signed and work is getting underway. I think a related effort is that they're building a library of high-quality photos and several photographers in town have been recommended and other suggestions are welcome. Like maybe, you know, having people from the community take, you know, beautiful photographs of Milburn and, you know, maybe we can use them in some sort of marketing capacity. And one of our subcommittee members, Tim Hubbell, I believe, is going to be working with Ryan on, on those efforts, who is a, he's also Director of Marketing for MSNBC. We discussed a new brand book that I've been working on. We had, I, we asked for some feedback on the logo and we put together some guidelines on the logo and our branding. And there's just a few little minor tweaks to be made, but that's, I think, in pretty good shape. And we're, you know, ready to move forward with that. Also, on our subcommittee meeting, we have a couple of subcommittee members who are very experienced in market research. And I believe they're considering like putting, moderating some meetings over Zoom and, you know, to meet with, you know, other members of the community, whether it be merchants or, you know, you know, people throughout the community and really to focus on all five districts, especially the four districts outside of downtown and how we can leverage all that and try to make a bigger impact to all of the districts. I think that's really it for right now. I, I agree with what Vicky was saying. I think we really need to have a more robust social media, social media campaign. I really think we need to work on that a lot and brand awareness. And I'm, I do hope that we will, you know, now that Ryan's on board, we can maybe focus some of Marla's efforts in that direction.
Thank you, Jumana. And just for the record, I see Andrew Morgan has joined the meeting.
Yes, he joined actually just right after roll call. So he's been.
Okay, good.
Here the whole time, yeah.
All right. Does anyone have anything additional to add on the marketing end of things?
I don't know. Did you want to, did I miss anything? You were there on the meeting. I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on the subcommittee members who are professionals in the area of market research. Where, what we're looking to do is convene some focus groups of merchants in the four districts outside of the downtown to get their feedback on the types of programming and things that they would like to see in their particular district. So we're looking to put those together and then to partner more closely with the downtown visioning in terms of what they're doing with the downtown. So really, the main focus is going to be on the four outer districts and convening merchants and to solicit feedback and then piggybacking with the downtown visioning plan on, on the downtown.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. That was the part of the meeting I missed. So thank you for filling in the gaps.
All right, very good. Thank you. Moving on from marketing, let's talk about the short-term planning and events. I think, Nadeja, are you kicking that off?
Yeah. Thank you. So we have currently two events that were running, which are really two basically mostly social media promotion. So one is the gift card promotion by $200, get $250 worth of value. This is still going. It's going until the end of February. So we will hopefully at next meeting have some stats about the results of this. But we have quite a great participation. I think we have close to 25 people participating in this. The second one is the Lunar New Year Promotion, which is ending tomorrow. Big thank you to Miss Lynn Restaurant for providing the 14 cookies. The cookies have been distributed and that's a great success. People really enjoy them. It's, it's harder to get the traction on, on the social media. People have to hashtag and have to tag a friend. So we have a few, we still have a day. If you're listening to this, go to the participating merchant, grab a cookie, hashtag Explore Milburn Short Hills to. to uh get a chance to win a gift card. Um, I wanted to talk quickly about uh community card ID that we have been talking about for a little bit. We, a few of us attended a presentation with the company uh Yfty. Um, Ryan gave us that contact information and um um, it's uh Yfty uh manages programs, uh community gift cards, which are digital cards that are mu- multi-use paper, which means you don't have to use them all in one go. You can just, if you have a fifty dollar, you can shop in different places. Um, those cards are delivered uh to a recipient by text or email, or they can be printed and handed to them and they leave on basically your phone. And what's amazing about it is that you can basically select um group of merchant, which for us would be merchants in the seed bid who want to participate and the card can only be used there. Uh, there is no cost to a merchant to participate other than um the cost of processing a credit card, a MasterCard. It's redeemed like a MasterCard phone order uh and um I have, unfortunately, I have a slide, but I can't share my screen, but it just looks like a MasterCard, like if you're calling, it's got a number, an expiration date, a CVS, and you just enter this, and this is how you pay with it. The cost to the merchant is zero. There is no enroll enrollment. The only cost is that redemption you pay for processing the card like we all do when we process a credit card. There is a cost to the buyer. The buyer buys the card at one dollar plus uh five percent of the gift value. Those fees can be uh waived if we can put together a sponsorship program. There is no need for hardware or integration or any type of app or anything like that. It runs on the Yfty uh platform, but we would have, if we were decide to decide to do something like that, we would have our own page. We design our own card. It's our marketing message. We can design our own promotion, but it's Yfty's platform and Yfty's technology. Um, towns like Benarstown Sheep are using them, South Woodbury, Frenchtown, Boulder in Colorado. In New York, there is an initiative called Shop Seven Sixteen, where there are seven hundred and sixteen shops who are part of a Yfty um community card. Um, we're still doing some due diligence. We're trying to um reach out to the communities who are using the card to see how they are enjoying the products and how it's working. And um, and provided the due diligence comes about, this factory would love to uh get the Board of Trustees uh feedback and uh and um, and if everybody's on board, maybe um decide on what to do with this. Um, any question before I move to that last future purpose events?
Does anybody have any questions on the, on the card presentation? No, I don't think.
I have a Uh, just the question is, I guess, what's the motive, like, why would a, I guess, why would a person buy a community gift card as opposed to like a specific store or and how are they sold?
So you can, so you, if you buy, say, you buy a fifty dollar gift card uh for the merchants and you can spend it. So you can go and buy a sandwich at the Melbourne Deli for twelve dollars, then you can go and buy something at Paper River Wrap. You can just go wherever you, you don't have, you're not assigned to one store, you're assigned to basically a, 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 a community of stores. So like, you know, sometimes people buy gift card and then they end up never spending it or or it's not the store that they shop to here, they can shop anywhere in the community. And interestingly enough, Yfty was telling us that um a third of the cards that are sold um are actually um corporate institutions that would normally go maybe buy like an Amazon gift card or something else, but now they're redirecting the money to the community because basically, and when they, the person who received the card can go and shop anywhere they want within that community. So they were saying that a third of um their, their sales were institutionalized at hospitals or schools who were basically redirecting the money to the community. So that was an interesting stat.
So do they tie it to a, like a zip code or do they, do you provide a list of the merchants to the company?
So you provide a list of the uh um of contacts to the company. The company would send um all the merchants on that list an activation card, and if you want to be part of the community card, you activate it, and if you don't want to, you don't have to, you don't activate it. It's actually very easy to implement as well.
Thank you.
It's pretty impressive, yeah.
I, I just, I just had a question, just conceptually, Nadeja. So instead, if I instead of going out and buying a Visa card that could be used anywhere, this is your basically uh, you're limited to Melbourne shopping.
Yeah, to support small businesses in your community. I think that's the, the idea behind it.
And you is, I, I heard, there was a question about a merchant fee. I think you said it's, it's similar or the same as a credit card.
The only cost is the cost of processing a MasterCard when the card is not present. So any merchant who can process a MasterCard over the phone would basically be able to process this card and that would be the, the cost, the, the basically, the, the cost that your credit card processor charges you for a MasterCard over the phone, that's the cost, that's the only cost.
And I'm sorry, just for my, so I can take it, is it GIFTY, G I F T Y?
No, GIFTY, Y I F T E E. There is another company called Giftly that towns like Springfield, for example, use, and a lot of people use Giftly. The problem with Giftly is if I send you, Andrew, a Giftly, I'm going to send you a fifty dollar Giftly, and I'm going to say to you, it'd be nice if you use it to go to the Melbourne Deli, but this card is basically, you, you then uh retrieve it by getting cash either on your bank account or on your PayPal or a Visa gift card, and you can go and spend it wherever you want. So it's not limited to a community. So kind of, it's not really what we're looking for. We're more looking for supporting the store who want to participate in this.
All right, thank you.
So we just finished due diligence and then we'll come back uh to you guys with uh, uh with the results, if that's um, if that's okay.
Yeah, Nadeja, I, I have uh contacts with both Woodbury and Frenchtown that I will be sending to you that we can contact and card. Um, one of the other nice things about Yfty, and I was the one who made the recommendation, uh, there are a number of towns in New Jersey that use it is that Sids and bids can allocate a line in their budget to help subsidize the cost of the card. And at a certain time in the year, whether it's a week or a month long, we could match any gift card. So if you were to buy a ten dollar gift card, you'd get twenty dollars in value on your Yfty. Um, and that, you know, you're doubling essentially uh money going back to the merchants um when that card is used. So there, there are opportunities, you know, if you were to run your own gift card program, the manpower and the setting up the whole process is, is very lengthy and can, can take a lot of man hours. So the fact that Yfley does everything on their end um is a real benefit.
And Ryan, this doesn't have a limit uh like it has to be used in thirty days or sixty days, does it?
I, I think we can, we can set the parameters of that.
Well, actually, they don't expire, uh, the, the cards don't expire, but after twelve months of no activity, there is a fee that kicks in, like a monthly fee to the recipient. But uh if you, if you use it, then your twelve months starts, you know, it starts from zero again. So as long as you use it every eleven months and twenty nine days, you have no fee.
Can, can you, just from the physical card, can you recharge the card?
I know, I do not believe that. I would have to confirm that, but I do not be, believe that they are reloadable, no.
Okay.
Yeah, and uh, and like Ryan was saying, uh, another thing that you can do, you can do, you can run promotions, you know, buy ten dollars, get to ten dollars. And we can, we, the seat could finance that, but you can also find sponsors. Some, some towns have been doing this when they find sponsors who actually uh finance promotions and we, we run our own promotion. We decide what the parameters are. Uh, you know, how long it lasts and all that, so we have, you know, control of all this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, very much. And I see Tracy Levine is here.
Hi, Tracy. Sorry for the work conflict and I missed a bit.
Just want to make sure the record notes that you're here.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. You know, I, I actually wanted, did want to add something um that maybe Alex could help, could uh help, help me with a little bit. But we are, the TC is looking into a um, a special shopping uh parking permit. And uh, I think it's applicable to uh, to the town, you know, to what, to some of what we're doing in terms of our mission. It should make it a lot easier for residents to, to have a special shopping permit where they, where they pay a, they pay a fee. But then they can basically, you know, shop, yeah, in our shopping, in our business districts and um, and not worry, you know, about meters. So um, I don't know, Alex, you want to add to that?
I, I think you got it, uh, Richard. You know, it, it would be a resident shopper uh parking pass. And it would allow our residents to utilize anywhere in the township uh or any of the business districts that have paid parking through a meter or through a pay station. And time limits would apply, but otherwise, you know, come down and park and be convenient and, you know, incentivize our residents to, you know, to shop local.
Yeah, so, so they pay a fee and then.
That's it for the year. So you pay a sixty dollar, whatever, the range is set right now uh in the draft ordinance between sixty and eighty dollars for the first two cars and uh seventy to a hundred dollars for the sec, the third and fourth car. Um, but you pay that fee and then you're, you're good for the year and and can come and shop.
I was going to ask you, how does that differ from paying uh the parking meters, but it's pay once and then park for the year?
And you don't have to put in your license plate number, which is, which is not so easy.
And it, and it also, from our standpoint, from the municipality standpoint, M pay to park, which has been um, a very convenient sort of application for parking uh and has skyrocketed its usage. Um, however, there, there is fees that the municipality pays for that. Um, and um, and I think that it just adds a whole level of convenience for our residents uh to, to come down and shop.
Okay.
And, and, and there's just one, one last, last thing that I wanted to add also was um, that the TC is also looking at updating um some of our uh, some of our onerous uh zoning requirements in terms of uh businesses being required to, to uh purchase uh, you know, uh parking uh, you know, parking, you know, when they, when they uh come into the township. So we're looking, we're reviewing that right now, and we're going to try to lower, you know, we're trying to eliminate uh required uh parking fees. So um, that's just something. So we're going to try to make it a lot easier for our businesses and easier for our shoppers.
Excellent. Okay, uh, moving on from there, we have uh.
Michael, I wasn't finished. One last point.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yes.
About future events, we had a, we had a m- meeting earlier this week with Ryan and the subcommittee. And uh, it was very productive. Thank you to uh Ryan and to everybody who attended. And we were um, uh, thinking of focusing um the, the rest of the year's uh effort of this committee on fo- four main event. Um, one would be um the farmers market, so that we would like to probably create a subcommittee that would just look into um, um, the farmer, the farmers market. Um, an event um in the summer um that would be um the co- coinciding with the closing of Main Street and develop um a, a, a program of uh, of events and performances. Um, an event in the fall, which would be kind of a taste of Melbourne, but try to involve not only restaurants, but um, the whole, all the stores in all the districts. And a big event around the winter and the holiday season with small business Saturday and Thanksgiving and the winter holidays. So this is where we are going to be focusing this committee's uh attention for the rest of the year. Um, and we'll have more, obviously, as the year goes, more information on each of them. That's it for me.
Thanks, Nadeja. Does anybody have any questions on these uh proposed events? I think Nadeja mentioned we're going to uh really try to get these vetted by um subcommittees and hopefully, you know, get, get the uh, the buy-in and uh participation from a wide swath of people.
I actually have a question for Nadeja. Uh, Nadeja, do during, for some of our planning, um, is there going to be uh room for music, you know, for, if we, you know, I, I know from living in town so long that we have a lot of uh, uh groups, a lot of musical uh groups uh that, that uh last year they played and something, and a lot of these groups are interested in uh, in uh, in, in helping us in playing. Um, is there in some of our events, is there room for a music venue?
Absolutely, and actually the, the, the summer one, that would be a big part of it and, but not just music, other performances, performances. But absolutely, yes, Richard, and we, I know you know quite a few, so we definitely need to liaise with you about this.
Yes, and I, and I would say, I, so I guess, I, I guess the other thing we should be doing is is reaching out to our local musicians and groups and uh, and, you know, and a- as we, as we, you know, as we go towards the spring and summer, I think we would have opportunities for uh, for them to play and uh and uh, and help us and uh, and engage with the community.
Nadeja, is that, are, are you, uh, your presentation completed?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, moving on, we go to uh item three, which is business development and advocacy.
You're, you're.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Business Development and Advocacy. Uh, I think we have Mayor Lieberberg and Richard Wasserman on that.
Yeah.
Former mayor, that's right, I'm sorry, old habits.
Yes.
Always, man, sorry.
So, yes, so um, Richard, do you want to kick it off or you want me to start with whatever works?
Uh, well, why, why don't you start and I'll, I'll kick in after.
Okay, great. Okay, so um, this is quite a robust com- uh committee that's very engaged in looking at how we can attract more businesses. Uh, we are, we, our February meeting is, was postponed in anticipation of Ryan's participation, so we will get a meeting going within the next couple of weeks. Um, really to look at uh continuing to dr- drive new participation with potential merchants. Looking at, uh, I know the TC has on their mandate to be looking at some of the zoning codes to make it a little bit more business friendly. Uh, I know Ryan is already looking at um uh, what some of the other communities don't do with their bid Sid in terms of a, a packet for potential new businesses. Sort of a uh, a how-to manual in terms of navigating and how that works. So this is all on the docket and uh stay tuned as if for uh, we hope to have a meeting uh on the, on the calendar within the next couple of weeks. We're just kind of getting our um, some, some more robust um information gathering until we move forward and once we have that, then will this committee will, this subcommittee will meet again. Thank you. Richard, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, you, you, you summed it up very well and uh, and that subcommittee is going to be, is, is very helpful. We've uh, we've already met uh, you know, in, in the past, and I think what we want to do is take that, that input from our merchants um, and our, in our stakeholders and lower the bar for entry into, into our community because, you know, we do have, as Ryan knows, uh, uh, we do have a very high vacancy rate. Uh, we want to make it easier for, to attract great businesses, you know, and uh, and uh and interesting businesses and sustainable businesses. We want to bring those businesses to Melbourne. Uh, and uh, we want to get to a point where, where we can say proudly that Melbourne is open for business and uh we want to make our community even more vibrant and uh, and that, that's a goal, that's a goal that the TC has. And it's a work in progress. So we hope, we hope with the subcommittee that we get further feedback. So we can take that and continue to update our zoning, so it's easier, you know, so everything is easier for businesses to come into the community and operate, and we also want to make sure that our standards remain high so that uh, if a new business comes in, that, that we can guarantee our neighbors that they're going to be good, good neighbors and, and uh and uh, and positive, a positive in the community.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone have anything to add to business development and advocacy? Okay, if not, we're going to uh sort of move on to finances. Unfortunately, our treasurer, Stephen Warner, is taking ill today. Um, and he usually goes through our expense list. The expense list was provided as part of uh an And he usually goes through our expense list, the expense list was provided as part of an advanced, part of the advanced meeting packet. I don't know if there's much to say. About that. Some more interest might be some of our action items, the first action item is. Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero three, which are guidelines for remote meetings. Fortunately or unfortunately, over the last nearly year now, we've been doing these remote meetings. And the state rightfully so has put a premium on access to members of the public. Not just having the members of a committee or a public entity participate, but making sure the public had access. Not only to view, but to, to make comments and to be heard, so. We are spelling out our guidelines for how we conduct public comment during remote meetings, and that's what this resolution is. Obviously, if we change, as we change websites or email addresses, we can update this. But this is the framework of how we will be operating, so it's clear to the members of the public how they find us and how they. Say sweet thanks to us, so if I could have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero zero three.
Motion.
A second, please.
Second.
Second, motion by Richard Wasserman, second, was that Nadesh?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor for the approval of this resolution?
I.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Second is the approval of the proposed twenty-two-one budget to be submitted to the township committee. I think that does describe what's happening here, we have proposed a budget which has been. Put on the, put on the website for people to review. As we could tell by our public comment section, people have thankfully reviewed it, so, and there are some questions. Since Stephen's not here, I'm just going to ask some questions.
Michael, maybe it would be good if Alex were to give an overview of the process of how, how we would proceed if we were to approve or deny the budget tonight? And how it would go over to the TC?
And then what happens?
Sure, so the, the idea of going through the budget tonight by this board. Is for potential approval to be submitted to the township committee. In which this board has to present that budget again to the township committee for their approval. Now that process takes place in two steps. Which is, and there's notifications within that, that process as well. But first is to present that as an introduction to the budget to the township committee. Assuming, again, just in the event that it is approved tonight by this board, that could be placed on the February twenty-third township committee agenda. For their consideration initially in its introduction. It does not, I mean, that's at the speed in which this board would like to see that happen. After the introduction, the, the budget needs to be noticed. And then a second meeting and a hearing on that budget must be done before the township committee. Again, this, the representatives of this board would present that budget. And be able to answer questions from the township committee and, and anybody at that public hearing. Once it's approved, then it, it, this year, nothing further would happen except for the allocation of the, the remaining funds to this organization.
So there are two public meetings at the township committee level that will take place to, to review this. And ultimately, hopefully approve the budget.
Correct.
Can the township committee strike line items, the way let's say the governor can strike line items?
Yes, so they can, they can deal with various line items in the budget. And there are certain parameters within the, the ordinance that, you know, states if there is a certain percentage, and I can't, I can't speak to the specifics of it. But if there's a certain percentage of a particular line item that is changed or looked to be changed. By the township committee, then that would, that would constitute a, a, a re-introduction of that, of that budget.
Did you have your hand raised, Ryan? Okay, sorry, it's reflection in the glass, there, there was a question and. Alex, I hate to put this back on you, but there was a question and I think we've, it may have been discussed at a prior meeting. But the budget number itself, since this year we're fully funded by the township, by the township. What is the origin of that overall budget number?
The origin of that number was the amount raised through assessment as well as the amount that was contributed to. To the Sid by the township in previous years. So that gets you to your, your, your total of, of two oh four. That was the rationale behind it. So in, in, in the past, and I'm just gonna, you know, don't know, but there, there was a question prior about the nine thousand. Dollars from the Clean Communities Grant that the township would allocate towards the, the, the previous iteration of the Special Improvement District or the, the DMC. So that is not broken out here, nor, you know, again, so it's, it's, it's sort of a little bit like. The money is all coming from the township at this point anyway, so if you decide to use that money for cleaning the streets. Please go ahead, but that's, but the idea is here is that that total dollar figure coming from the municipality is two hundred and four thousand.
Okay. And money that's not, money that i- it would ultimately be budgeted to this, to our group. If it's not used by the end of the year, does that go back to the township, to the township general fund?
So. I think that's a, I think that's a, a reasonable, a reasonable question and maybe something that needs to be further clarified, however. You know, I, 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 I think that it, it, again, and I don't want, I don't want to speak out of turn or, or. But I, I would say that that would be something that needs to be clarified as to whether on, any unexpended funds. Because, but also I, you know, I think we need to be careful about that too, because you don't want to just be spending money to spend money so that you don't lose it, right? And you also, you know, I think there's a degree of cash flow when dealing with this organization. We ran into this in the last iteration, especially the, the DMC. That, that there is, there is going to be a gap between when, especially going into twenty-two, when the assessment takes place. There's going to be a gap between when you go through your budget process and when that assessment actually takes place. And so, you know, that assessment generally wouldn't take place till March or April. And so there's, there's a degree that you need to have cash flow into the, into the year for, for operation purposes.
In the absence of the temporary budget process that.
You were able to go through this year because it's money from the township.
Right, but in future years, we don't have that.
That wouldn't exist.
Okay. Ryan, you've had a chance to, to look and certainly work with us a little bit on this budget, did you have any comments, questions or? Forecasts for the next several months?
No, I'll, I'll say that this budget is, is very, very similar to the draft that was reviewed at the last meeting. As was noted that we did. Kind of put the holiday and seasonal events into a larger bucket. Mainly for the purpose of the, the event subcommittee is still working through which events that we're going to be focusing on. I think we've identified four kind of main pillars that we're going to focus on for twenty-two-one. But we're still within that process of what those events are going to look like and what those individual budgets are going to be. So we wanted to give ourselves some flexibility to, to be able to allocate those funds accordingly.
But before you get off that, but money that's in that bucket has to be used for events.
Yes.
In other words, that can't be shifted to some other area.
Correct, correct. The, I, there was a question earlier about the membership dues and fees. This is for things like joining the National Main Street Center, joining Downtown New Jersey, the International Main Street Association. And if myself or any staff or board members would like to attend any online conferences or courses in downtown management. That we would be able to do that and provide ourselves with some education on best practices in downtown management and running a main street program. So that we, we wanted to include that in there to give ourselves the opportunity to learn and grow. And to be a part of organizations that are helping main streets throughout the state and the country.
And that, does that also open up opportunities for merchants and restaurants to participate in some of those?
Yes, yes, and in addition. We are, or I have started the process of applying to designate Explore Melbourne, Short Hills as a, as a main street district with the state. And one of the requirements for doing that is to be a member of the National Main Street Center. So that, you know, this line item would help cover those membership dues.
Do any of the board members have any questions about the budget that's being discussed? And again, this is, this is really the, we're sending it up, it'll have to be discussed on a minimum of two occasions. Before the township committee, the coming month or so.
I have a question.
Is that your?
Yes, that's me, sorry, and the lighting signage, historical markers, is this anticipating maybe working with, with HPC? Or is this anticipation of that, or is this something else?
It was, so I think HPC really kind of just came up tonight. I think that, not that that can't be used for that, but this was something for signage around. That we had thought about around the five different districts. But it could.
Like branding of Explore Melbourne, that type of signage or, or, you know, I'm just trying to understand. And I'm, what, and also the lighting, what, what, what is the lighting, is that for holiday lighting or is that something different?
If you don't mind, here, I'll, I'll, I'll give a clarification. It's my understanding that this is for holiday lighting, could also be for pedestrian scale lighting, things like that.
Okay, so like, let's say when we close Main Street and you have, well, that, that lighting is already there, but like, things of that nature.
Right, and, and just as a further clarification to a point that was brought up previously and back from the reorg meeting of the municipal budget. This does not, the municipal budget does not include anything when it comes to holiday lighting or pedestrian scale lighting. That lighting that's in that, in the municipal budget is for street lighting, the township must pay for all of the street lights throughout this municipality.
Right, right. Okay.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Okay, I just, Chair, I'd just like to make one, one other, one other clarification. With the process, that the release of any funds in the event that this budget is approved is contingent upon the approval of the municipal budget. Just want to make that clear.
Right.
Right, okay, right. All right, so what I would like to do, and I, I want to have a roll call vote on this because it's a budget. But I'd like a motion to approve this proposed budget to be submitted to the township committee, can I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Richard Wasserman, can I have a second? Anyone?
Second.
Who was that?
Andrew.
Andrew, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Tracy, can you do a roll call for vote, please?
Yeah, Jemana Cullen.
Can I abstain? Or no vote?
Suppose you can, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Tracy Catlebe, and that's me, yes, Andrew Morgan.
Yes.
Nadesh Nicole.
Yes.
Michael Palavecchio.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
And Stephen Weiner is not here. So.
That's five affirmative and.
Yeah.
Do no votes, okay.
Okay. That's it for our action items, so that, so the proposed twenty-two-one budget will now be submitted to the township committee. Do we have any additional board comments? I think. We've had lots of comments already, announcements, we have business updates in the Sid, anything? I know Tracy may have had some, up, some notifications you've sent around recently, does anybody have any updates?
Yeah, I had two updates that I had, well, one I know I sent around, this is the one I'm not gonna send, so yes, so. On a bittersweet note. Kun Tai closed after nineteen years. On Melbourne Avenue, but on a positive note, Jack's Lobster Shack is going to be opening in that space. He says probably in the spring around April timeframe. They have locations in a few other places, I know I've been to the Montclair location and it was great, and that just. Seems like such a great addition to town, something fun, something different. So that's exciting, and I also saw an announcement that Jordan Ali's Photography is reopening a location in town. I believe that's a photographer that's been in town and is now re-establishing a retail location specifically focused on newborn photography. So those are two things that I saw, but would love to know if anyone else has any other business update they know of.
I think Vinnie's Pan Pizza.
Oh, yes.
Vinnie's Pan Pizza, so congratulations and welcome back here.
Right, and that's in the location that was Peter's restaurant, it's been kind of the same, same group, but new branding, new ideas, right?
Yeah, welcome back.
That's good. Any other announcements or thoughts?
I don't know if Andrew had something, he, he had unmuted there for a second, just didn't want to miss that if Andrew had something to say.
Sorry, I'm eating dinner at the same time, so. Actually, I was just gonna ask, is there, I'm sure we've been over this and I'm just not remembering, but is there a reason? I guess several people had commented that they feel like they would like to make comments after we've had these discussions and gone over things. Is there any reason not to like maybe move the public comment to after, we've probably addressed this and I just don't remember why we don't do it that way? There's really no reason we could do it, I, I think it's important. This is me speaking personally, I think it's important to have public comment before we vote on things, so. You can take, you can take into consideration what the public may have to say. If it's the will of this board, we could certainly consider adding a second public comment session, we can, you know. It's, it's just one more thing, it's not that big a deal, I just think from a process, in my head, a process perspective. I'd like to hear from the public before we vote or consider things. To take action on, but there's, there's no reason, you could do whatever, you know, within what you want.
I think that makes sense, I don't know, I guess I would defer to what the rest of you folks. If people want to make comments after, I just don't know, like if they made a comment before, I just don't know how it would work, do you get one comment either before or after? Or does the, yeah, I don't know, just throw it. Several times.
We, we do have a bylaws subcommittee which we could just get together between now and the next meeting and report back. Again, there's no, there's no reason for or against it, it's just kind of the way we do it. And, and there, there have been some comments, some, some organizations do it before and after, some just do one. We could certainly look at that and report back for the March meeting. Any other announcements or board comments? All right, if not, I would take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
My second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Bye, everybody, good night.
Mr. Feld. I, I feel like I'm at the bank, I'm sorry.